Meeting will come to order. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the regular session meeting of the Leewood Governing Body for July 7th, 2025. The meeting will come to order, and I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Alan Sunkel.
Here.
Mary Larson.
Here.
Chuck Sipple.
Here.
Julie Kane.
Here.
Stephen Castor.
Here.
Lisa Harrison.
Here.
Deborah Philla.
Here.
Sherry Gayed.
Here.
And Mayor Mark Elkins is present and presiding.
Thank you, Ms. Stromberg. I find that a quorum is present, that all the governing body members are present and participating with Ms. Gayed participating by Zoom. With that, I would ask the audience to arise and follow me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Ms. Stromberg, does staff have any amendments or changes to the agenda as it was published?
Uh, no, sir.
If not, is there a motion to approve the agenda as published? So moved?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Sipple. Thank you, Ms. Larson. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the agenda as it was published last week, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. The ayes have it, and the agenda is unanimously approved. That brings us to the segment of our agenda where we accept citizen comments on various topics. I'll note that the, we limit presentations to, pardon me, to three minutes, three to five minutes. Tonight, I think we'll choose to limit them to three minutes. I have a number of people who have signed in to speak on item 13A, which is the Planning Commission case on the reserve at Iron Horse Townhomes. And for you individuals, I would give you the option, or I will give you the option, of waiting to give your presentations at such time as we take up that matter. That does come a little bit later in the agenda. But if there's anybody here who would like to be heard on that right now, could you raise your hand? All right. We'll defer those on 13A until we get to that part of the agenda. Let's see. I see that Mr. Sharp and Mr. Fratz are here. We'll invite you to come forward momentarily. Is there anyone else in the audience who signed in who wishes to speak on any item of interest to the city other than item 13A? All right. If not, then, we will go by citizen comments. All right. I wanted to make sure I didn't skip Mr. Sharp and Mr. Franz, but you're coming up on the agenda momentarily, gentlemen. So with that, I'll move on to the proclamation that I have this evening. This evening, we want to recognize an important event in, for the city of Leewood, and that has to do with the, with recognition of Parks and Recreation Month. And I'll start with the proclamation. It says that, I've said that whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, and whereas parks and recreation are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including the city of Leewood, and whereas parks and recreation promote health and wellness, improving the fiscal and mental health of people who live near parks, and whereas parks and recreation promote time spent in nature, which positively impacts mental health by increasing cognitive performance and well-being, and whereas parks and recreation encourage fiscal activities by providing space for sports, walking, biking trails, swimming facilities, summer camps, and many other activities designed to promote active lifestyles, and whereas parks and recreation events, facilities, and programs in the arts increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, and the attraction and retention of businesses, and whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors, and whereas Leewood recognizes the benefits derived from parks and recreation resources, and whereas Friday, July 18th, 2025, is Park and Recreation Professionals Day, and we acknowledge the city's dedicated staff who helped build the strong and vibrant communities through our Parks and Recreation Department. Now, therefore, I, Mark E. Elkins, Mayor of the city of Leewood, hereby proclaim that July be recognized as Parks and Recreation Month in Leewood, Kansas, and encourage all residents to enjoy our parks and recreation programs and to share appreciation to the department's employees and volunteers and witness whereof, I have hereby to set my hand and cause the great seal of the city of Leewood to be effect this seventh day of July, 2025. And I would just add to that, that I think it's particularly appropriate for us to give this recognition this evening. The governing body, City Council, and others received a copy of an email that I sent out this morning that just recognized what an amazing event that our Parks and Recreation Department, in conjunction with all the other city departments, put on to help the city celebrate the Fourth of July. And as I said in that email, the user experience was exceptional. From an outsider's perspective, the event seemed to go off without a hitch and was flawless. The many visitors who enjoyed the event seemed to be having a great time, and the band really added a celebratory atmosphere. The fireworks were incredible. The evening was topped off by Reaching cloaked in red, white, and blue. I know that this kind of event took a tremendous amount of work by many, many people, Chris, on a holiday, no less. And I think that I can speak for the entire City Council, thanking you all for presenting Leewood to the greater Kansas City community in such a great light. And so it seems, as they say, entirely appropriate that we combine the execution that you all put forth last Friday together with this proclamation this evening. So, thank you very much, Chris. We appreciate all that you and your staff do.
Chris, before you leave, do you have any idea of how many people came? Was it the same or more than years past?
Uh, I, it's hard to tell. Just, you know, there's so many people that are always out on the soccer fields, but I'm going to talk with the chief, just because they did fly the drone, and sometimes that helps us estimate attendance. So, we might have some numbers for you shortly.
Thank you. Thank you.
And at this point, I would invite Mr. Sharp and Mr. Fratz, I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly, if you could come forward and introduce you and your business to the City Council, and we want to welcome you on behalf of the city of Leewood. So, please introduce yourselves, give us your name and address, so we've got it for the benefit of our record, and tell us why you've come to Leewood tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Bob Franz. I'm Vice President at Federal Realty. This is Jeff Sharp.
Also Vice President of Federal Realty. Thank you for having us this evening.
And we are here to just introduce ourselves, give a quick little background on federal realty, and then also, you know, learn from the city of Leewood what you guys would like to see. We just closed on Town Center Crossing and Town Center Plaza last week on July 1st. And then this is Jaclyn, who I'm sure you guys know. Jaclyn is going to continue to be part of our team moving forward with property management on site. We thought it was very important to keep her and the continuity with the community and her relationships moving forward. So, Jaclyn, if you want to say a couple words.
Oh, gosh. You know, what can I say? We all love Town Center Plaza and Crossing, and I couldn't be more excited that we have partners who are looking to invest and to help us grow and be all that we can be. So, thank you guys for being here.
Just a couple other things, just real quick. So, Federal Realty, we're a publicly traded REIT based out of North Bethesda, Washington. We've got 103 properties throughout the country, about 27 million square feet, all open-air shopping centers. We do have some office and multifamily in our portfolio as well, so we are experienced there. We've been around for about 60 years, very well-capitalized company, and we are long-term holders of assets. Most everything that we do acquire, we plan on keeping and holding indefinitely, investing in the community, investing in the property, and everything so forth.
Thanks, Bob. And I would just add to that, you know, Federal Realty, and this is one of the reasons why I work at the company, has a tremendous commitment to design, great architecture, great landscape design, placemaking, environmental graphics. These are things that we bring to all of our properties. We're looking forward to upgrading some of our centers that we just purchased here in Kansas City, in the city of Leewood. And so these are just a few examples of the kinds of properties, the kinds of environments that we create.
Well, oh, good. You've got more.
Yeah, just circling back, just to make sure it's clear. So, we did acquire Town Center Plaza and Town Center Crossing. You know, again, obviously, we, 550,000 square feet is what we acquired. Obviously draws millions of visitors each year. We do believe it's a regional destination, great demographics in the city of Leewood, and it's already home to some premium brands that we all think that you guys love and shop at weekly, and we hope to, you know, continue to upgrade the properties, invest in them, landscape design, you know, everything like that. So, that's right.
Well, as you have probably heard, many of us say before, Town Center is really the product of a vision that leaders, before this group of leaders frankly had, about bringing community to the city of Leewood, creating a downtown for Leewood. And the jewel of that idea is sitting right across the street that you now own. And so it means a great deal to this city and to this governing body, because it really is, 119th in row is downtown Leewood. With all due respect to my friends at 95th and Mission, the center of gravity is right here. And we're really pleased that you're here, and we're pleased that what we've heard so far and what we expect to hear in the future in terms of your plans to continue to improve and make it an even better downtown than we've had before. Do any of my colleagues on the governing body have questions or comments for the folks from Federal Realty? Yes, Julie?
Um, A+ for keeping Jaclyn. She's a pivotal part of the success, I think, of Town Center, Town Center Crossing, and I've worked with her, as most of us have, on the Chamber of Commerce, and I know how hard she works and how dedicated, and she has a vision. So, thank, we're pleased, very pleased to hear that. Do you own anything else in town, or is this your first foray into Kansas City?
We don't. This is our first foray into Kansas City and really the Midwest. Other properties that we own are coastal, Boston down to Miami on the East Coast, California, and then Phoenix on the West Coast.
So, you two have just...
We're excited to be here.
Yeah. So, you two have discovered Kansas City.
We have.
My father always said it's best kept secret in the Midwest, and we don't care that other people don't know about us. We know what we've got here in town, so welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. We couldn't agree more.
Thank you, Ms. Kane. Ms. Harrison?
I would just add that I flew across the street just 17 minutes ago after getting a cute little pedicure across the street, and as I drove in and I texted a few of my friends up here, I was thrilled to see that every row of parking had at least 10 cars in it at 5:40 on a Monday evening, and every little girl in town was getting a pedicure tonight at Town Center Crossing. So, Town Center Plaza. So, there was a long, long line. So, it is, I love seeing a busy parking lot when it's not holiday season and when it's a Monday. And so, kudos to the full stores over there and their ability to attract. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harrison. Other comments or questions? Ms. Larson?
Just, welcome to Leewood, and I can't wait to see what you have in mind as far as architectural design improvements for Town Center and your landscaping plans. You know, we're, it's showing a little age, and so, fresh eyes and ideas, very exciting, and we're thrilled you're here and look forward to seeing your vision.
Thank you. Dr. Castor?
I'm also excited. Welcome to Leewood. Excited to see, I think, as Julie said, you know, we're a, not very many people know about Kansas City, but really excited. I think our area would be ripe for investment for some of these brands that are only on the coasts, that really don't have a Midwest location yet, and I think that'd be really a great opportunity for us to bring some innovative ideas, stores, restaurants to our community, to enhance the living that our citizens have. So, thanks again for coming.
Thank you, Dr. Castor. Any other comments or questions? Well, again, welcome to Federated Realty, or Federal Realty, and we look forward to the future. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Jaclyn. We come now to an annual matter that comes before the governing body. It's Project 83196, which is a public hearing to consider in ordinance levying assessments for tax year 2026 for improvements within the park place development pursuant to KSA 12-6A01 at SEC and the city's Home Rule Authority of Article 12, Section 5 of the Kansas Constitution. Mr. Cobbey, Ms. Stoddard, who's going to take this one?
I will, Mayor. Thank you. Good evening. This item is an annual public hearing that you have had now. This is the 15th and last year for this particular hearing on levying special assessments related to the park place development. So, this is simply to, an opportunity for those being assessed to make any comment, and for you all to ask any questions that you may have. So, with that, I'll be open to questions.
Thank you, Ms. Stoddard. Questions for Ms. Stoddard? If there are none, is there a motion to be had? Moved to approve?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? If not, we'll move forward to a vote on inordinance levying assessments for tax year 2026 for improvements within park place development.
Mayor, you do need to have a public hear, open a public hearing and close it before.
Thank you. I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone here who wishes to be heard? If not, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved. Second.
Thank you, Ms. Larson. Thank you, Ms. Philla. All those in favor of closing the public hearing indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ayes have it, and the public hearing is closed. There's a pending motion on the floor to approve inordinance levying assessments for tax year 2026 relating to improvements at Park Place. Any further discussion of that? If not, it does recall a rule call vote, and I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Mrs. Philla?
Here.
Oh, yes. Sorry. Uh, Mr. Sunkel?
Aye.
Mrs. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Sipple?
Aye.
Dr. Castor?
Aye.
Mrs. Kane?
Aye.
Mrs. Harrison?
Aye.
Mrs. Gayed?
Aye.
Thank you. I have that as an 8-0 vote, and the ordinance is unanimously adopted. Thank you all. We come now to the consent agenda, which is a collection of items for approval, except to the extent that any individual governing body member wishes to pull an item for additional discussion. Are there any items that wish to be pulled? Ms. Sunkel?
I would like to pull M., please.
M. Ms. Kane?
J. and L., please.
Any others? Yes, Mr. Sipple? Any other items? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of items G., J., L., and M.?
So moved. Second.
Thank you, Mr. Sunkel. Thank you, Dr. Castor. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving those items I just referred to on the consent agenda, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. The ayes have it, and the items on the consent agenda with the exceptions of items G., J., L., M., and M. are approved and adopted. We'll take up first item G., which is a resolution of the city of Leewood, Kansas expressing the governing body's intent to levy a property tax exceeding the revenue neutral rate and scheduling a public hearing for Tuesday, September 2nd, 2025, at 7:00 p.m. or as soon thereafter as may be heard. Mr. Sipple?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a kind of administrative item. Since we have basically a month and several days to go until we have a resolution on this, I'm hoping that the city administrator and our communication director can, can go to the internet and make our case as to the justification for that. Not for fear of what we would lose, but just what this, what flexibility this gives us in terms of enhancements to the city, what other municipalities in Johnson County are doing on this issue. So, we're not alone, and we are not living in the dark. I just think we ought to spend some time wordsmithing our mindset as to why we did this during the budgeting item. That's it. With that, I move to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Sipple. Thank you, Ms. Philla. Is there additional discussion over item G.? Additional questions for staff? If not, all those in favor of adopting the resolution to express our intent to levy a property tax exceeding the revenue neutral rate and setting a public hearing for September 2nd, 2025, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ayes have it, and the resolution is unanimously adopted, and the public hearing is unanimously set for September 2nd, 2025. Brings us now to item J., which I believe is Ms. Kane, which is a resolution authorizing the construction of improvements for the energy conservation program in the city of Leewood pursuant to Charter Ordinance Number 33, and for the issuance of general obligation bonds or temporary notes of the city to pay the costs thereof, expressing the intent to reimburse the costs of the projects so incurred from proceeds of general obligation bonds and authorizing and approving certain relayed matters and actions. Ms. Kane?
Uh, yes. I'm not sure who I'm speaking to, whether it's Diane or to Dawn, but given the recent passing in DC with this recent bill, and I know energy, energy components are in that bill, and knowing this is not an insignificant amount of money, and from what I can read, very little has been said, what's going to happen in this, in this lane with this passage of this bill? I just wonder, I know Navitas is supposed to be refunding us, but, but I don't even know that Navitas knows what's going to happen. Does anybody right now with, with that newly passed bill? So, I'm wondering if it's prudent, perhaps, that we take a pause on this at this point in time until we have more clarity, or not? Maybe there's something here I'm missing. But I know it's supposed to be reimbursed. I know it's supposed to be over, over the life of this project. You know, we will make money as opposed to be spending money. So, I understand the logic. I just question the timing, given the recent passage.
Ms. Stoddard, do you wish to be heard?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Yes, I just heard from Ryan at Navitas, and he confirmed that the numbers that we use for the project estimates that we provided did not include the rebate, potential rebates that we may be eligible for. So, the good news is that, you know, that would be covered in the estimates. If we are able to get rebates for any of the projects, we certainly will pursue those, and then those would go to reduce the project cost. But the costs that were provided at your last meeting don't include the rebate amounts that we're hoping to be able to get. I will need to do some more research into the bill to find out if there are any impacts, and we'll need to look closely at that. As you know, it's an extremely lengthy bill, but we'll do our best to get an answer to that, and I can certainly pass that along.
Ms. Kane?
So, so is it prudent to put a pause on this?
My concern would be, we do know that there are a number of tariffs at play, and also, we do have several projects that are very, need to be completed. One of those, as an example, is the HVAC at the, at Ironwoods, and the thing I have been fearful of is none of us want to have a bride that is upset because the HVAC is not working in the August wedding. So, we do want to get that done as soon as possible, and also try and avoid any additional costs for these equipment as it relates to any tariffs. So, that was the reason why we're trying to get them, you know, get these projects rolling, so all that equipment can be ordered.
So, is it clear, though, even Navitas doesn't know what to expect? I mean, that's, that's not a misstatement. I mean, nobody knows what to expect.
In terms of the rebates, no, but again, that's not built into the, the amounts that were provided, anyway. So, if, to the extent that we do receive any rebates, that will just accrue to, and to the city and be a cost savings.
Yeah. I just don't want to be caught with our, you know, whatever my analogy is at the moment. I don't want to be caught, caught in, like I said, in this, in this time where all sorts of things are changing and nobody knows exactly what's going to happen, that we push a button where it would be better to put a pause on that button.
I think that the biggest risk is us delaying this, because especially with some of these equipment purchases, you know, to the extent that they may be coming from somewhere that that may require adding tariffs, the longer that we wait, we do risk that. And again, as I mentioned, we have a couple of them that are really important and timely projects that we need to proceed with.
And that I can understand. But if you look at this entirety of this many millions of dollars, that HVAC at Iron Horse is just a tiny fragment of that total. So, I don't, I don't necessarily agree that that argument is enough to support passing this when we don't, nobody knows exactly what's going to happen. don't- nobody knows exactly what's going to happen.
I think that the answer relies on the fact that the federal rebates were not included in the feasibility study. And so if- if those rebates do stay in place, then it would in order to more quickly retiring the bonds and get benefit there. So the, at least what I'm hearing staff say is the feasibility of the project itself is not dependent upon those tax credits and other rebates that- that we hope to get, that we intended to get. And so again, I guess kudos to staff for having taken the time to analyze the fiscal feasibility without those in place. So that would be my thought. But other thoughts? Mr. Sipple, you look like you have a comment?
Does Ms. Kane want to make a motion?
I- I would move to put a pause on this. That's- that would be my motion.
So would- would your motion be to continue it? Our choices are to continue, pass, or reject?
Yeah, my- my motion would be to continue this until we have more clarification.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second? Ms. Phylla?
I just, my understanding is, is if we don't do this project, we are going to- we're going to be paying the consultants for all of their time to do all the project management that's been done to date, and our staff has been involved in all of those projects.
Can't hear.
I said if we do not proceed with the contract, then we do, as my understanding, we will owe Navitas for their time and money in putting forth this project together. Is that not correct?
We would owe for the- the detailed audit that was completed.
Right. So we've got all this momentum, we've done all the homework, and we have the savings. So I would just really hope that we would- we've had multiple meetings on this, so at the last minute, we don't pull the rug out for fears that haven't been- haven't been realized of lost revenue that isn't baked into the cake.
So I have a motion that's looking for a second at this point in time.
Second.
Thank you. Dr. Castor, there is a motion as second to continue the resolution and the issuance of the general obligation bonds. Mr. Sipple, I believe you had a comment?
I just want to say that this is very similar to a streetlight improvement project the Holbrook Homes Association and the Sienna Homes Association did under the guidance of Public Works, where we replaced high-pressure sodium lights with LED lights. The city pays for the LED electricity, or the electricity to power the streetlights. Their power bills went dramatically down. And those two homes associations paid for the work that we did up front, where we had a contractor come in and put in LED lights in all of our streetlights, and it was paid back in four or five years. It's a dramatic savings. And I know there's some LED light replacements on this list, so I'm in favor of proceeding, so.
Dr. Castor?
Yeah, I'm not opposed to the projects at all. I'm just opposed to borrowing money to do these maintenance projects. In my mind, I would prefer that we take the major projects that we need to do, use existing funds that the city has, and not borrow money to do the project. So that's just my view.
Other comments? Ms. Larson?
I understand the hesitation to move forward on this, and I did not vote for it initially. And it, with the vote being around midnight, didn't help with this large sum of money. And so I- I understand it. I think we should move forward, but it is with hesitation, and I certainly hope that, you know, we realize the savings from these projects, and it is the large sum of money that it- that gives me great pause, that maybe this was bigger than what it needed to be. My only comment.
Ms. Phylla?
I was just wondering if I know- I've- I know that the staff is familiar with the other cities that have done this, where their savings have far exceeded the proposal, so I was wondering if you could share with that information with us.
Well, I can speak to the project that I was involved in at the City of Lawrence. The City of Lawrence did a package of projects, kind of like our package of projects, but specific to some of their needs, and their- the savings was- ended up being a quicker payback than was expected. They had very good luck with the program, and it was able for them to accelerate some of these energy savings earlier than what they would have done otherwise, just given the cost of the- of the projects and competing with other capital improvements needs. This- this project will enable us to complete all of the LED street lighting that is remaining, and that's, as Councilmember Sipple mentioned, is a large bill that will be reduced, and then we'll use that savings to actually pay for the city back for the- for the money over time.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? If not, the motion pending is a motion to continue item J. on the consent agenda, which would be to continue to an indefinite time the conservation program and the issuance of general obligation bonds. All those in favor of continuing that matter, please raise your hands. I have votes from Ms. Kane and Dr. Castor. All those opposed to continuing the matter, please raise your hands. That would be Ms. Larson, Mr. Sipple, Ms. Phylla, Ms. Harrison, and Mr. Sunkel, and Ms. Gayed. So the motion fails on a six to two vote. So that would suggest that perhaps another motion might be in order at this point in time?
Moved to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Phylla. Thank you, Mr. Sipple. Any additional discussion? If not, all those in favor of adopting the resolution authorizing the construction of improvements for the energy conservation program and for the issuance of general obligation bonds or temporary notes to pay the cost of that program, please indicate by raising your hands. And again, I have Ms. Larson, Mr. Sipple, Ms. Phylla, Ms. Harrison, Mr. Sunkel, and Ms. Gayed. Those opposed, same sign. And that would be Dr. Castor and Ms. Kane. The motion passes on a six to two vote. The resolution is adopted, and the issuance of the general obligation bonds or temporary notes are authorized. We come now to item L., which is a staff report for the Director of Parks and Recreation and Arts, Chris Claxton. And Ms. Kane, I believe that one is yours as well, please.
It is indeed. Thank you. I always appreciate these reports from Parks and Rec and Public Works. The way the- the way it read regarding the Veterans Memorial, I just want to reiterate or confirm that all of the funds that are tied into the Veterans Memorial will be fundraised and will not be the burden of- or the burden, that was the wrong word, not be the responsibility of the city.
That's correct.
So the way it was written, it just- it's just not crystal clear to me, so I just wanted to- to make that point. And so as long as everybody's clear on that, then I'm moved to approve. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kane. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Harrison. Any discussion? All those in favor of accepting the staff report from the Director of Parks, Recreation, and Arts, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ayes have it, and the staff report is unanimously accepted. We come now to the staff report for the Director of Public Works, David Lay. And Mr. Sunkel, I believe this was your item.
It was. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to thank the Public Works Department for the, I guess it's maybe the third project down in the pictures here of 83rd Street getting- getting some much-needed patch to tide us over until the spring reconstruction. And I've had several residents reach out and say they think it's made a positive effect, so- so I appreciate that very much.
Mr. Lay?
Yeah, well, thank you. So Public Works did that work over the past month. We also did 95th Street, which is another concrete street, and we did Mission Road south of 103rd Street. So we finished that up the summer, and then in the wintertime, they are going to do the same process on 135th Street. So it's a much better process than just doing potholes. This hopefully will hold the street together for two to three more years without much more maintenance from Public Works.
Thank you, Mr. Lay. Ms. Harrison?
Thank you. David, I've said it before, and I'll say it again, I'm a map girl. And the map that you have, the flood model mapping that you have to illustrate the Leewood South and Waterford flood study is fascinating to me, as I zoom in and look at my house and its locale to what I'm going to now affectionately refer to as Lake Williams, which is my next-door neighbor's backyard. This- this mapping, is this what you have seen in the past, or what is realistic to see after, say, that July rain we had last summer? Where did you all get the AI for this?
So they, the engineer surveyed this area, and so they used their computer models to generate the flood, to generate these maps. And then they would go back in, and we shared pictures and elevations of where the flooding was, and that's what they used to calibrate their model. So when they go through there and add their improvements to the storm sewer, they can actually run the same model to make sure that their system, what they're proposing, will actually solve the problem.
Very good. I'm a communications person at heart. Do you share this model when you send those letters out for those easements? Because I feel like this picture is worth a thousand and one words.
We will have it at the public meeting, so we are hoping to have a public meeting later this month with the residents.
It's hard to argue with- with all of this.
Well, I think they all realize the flooding that's occurring out there, so it'll help if they have any, when they look at this, if they see areas they believe may have higher flood marks, it'll be easier for them, too, to point those areas out to us.
And I think, just in the name of, you know, a future communications campaign, Ms. Beth, you see all those wonderful lines in the backyards of everybody's homes? I wish y'all were seeing what I was seeing in the audience, because it's amazing. Those are by design. We want the water in the backyard. Please don't feel your backyard swells in so that the water then has to go somewhere else, because this is exactly what's supposed to happen. These perfect lines where the water goes down the backyards to the storm drains. In fact, probably some of these concern areas might be where people have done some radical landscaping to fill in a divot that they didn't understand in their backyard, and they wanted a smooth, putting-green backyard, and they didn't realize what they had just done to the water flow. So I would love to share this, you know, on social media and see these for other areas where we are doing stormwater work. It makes- it makes all the sense in the world. So thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harrison. Ms. Larson?
I just wanted to thank you for moving forward with the Leewood South Waterford flooding project, the remediation, and I look forward to the citizens' meeting in July. And do we have a date for the stormwater meeting in August?
It would be the last Wednesday of August.
Last Wednesday. Okay.
That's the anticipated meeting date.
Okay. And hopefully we can share, again, with the residents that are directly affected the most in the Lake Wenanga region, to- that we're- we're working on it, especially with all the flooding that is in the news currently, and the national news. It really motivates me to want to help the folks in Leewood. So thank you very much.
Mr. Sipple?
David, is any of these streets in the- in your map scheduled for corrugated metal pipe replacement, or are these already concrete pipes?
So the pipes that are in Leewood South are metal pipes, so those are going to need to get replaced at some point. We do have a couple options to help reduce the street flooding. That doesn't impact the storm sewers, but it will help immediately solve some of that flooding issues that we're seeing. And we've worked with a golf course on that.
So when we get farther down the road, if you make that available to Ms. Harrison and me, we might share that with the HOAs or the residents that have problems.
Okay. Yeah, this is, that area in Leewood South is the last area with the metal pipe that we need to get in there to replace.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sipple. Other questions for Mr. Lay on his report? If not, is there a motion to accept the report?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Sunkel. Thank you, Mr. Sipple. Any discussion? All those in favor of accepting Mr. Lay's staff report, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ayes have it, and Mr. Lay's report is unanimously accepted. Pardon me, that brings us to the mayor's report. I've already mentioned the brilliant execution by the city, and it wasn't just the Parks Department, it was by the Police Department, the Fire Department, the Communications Department, the Public Works Department. I spoke to a number of our folks that were out there on Friday, and they started at 11:00 and finished after 10:30, and they did it on a holiday. And so, again, I think they just did a wonderful job in- in helping us to present the City of Leewood in a very positive way. I also met earlier today with Wandra Minor, who's the pres- or not the president, she's a membership chairman and a past president of the Johnson County NAACP, and we had an opportunity to discuss ways that the city and their organization can work together on issues of common interest in the future. And finally, just a reminder, I know Beth has put it out in many places, I will remind everyone as well that along with our consultant, BBN, we will be hosting an open house in the Oak Room tomorrow night between 5:30 and 8:30. The purpose of the open house is to make a series of design concepts available to our residents, and the cost of those design concepts available to our residents for their review and comment. Once BBN has had a chance to collect and summarize the input from the community, I intend to convene a discussion of the City Council with a view towards giving BBN additional and specific guidance on what the council would like to see in the way of a final plan proposal that will ultimately go into the Planning Commission for review and consideration. That concludes my report. We have now come to the council member reports. Mr. Sunkel, did you have a report this evening?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I do. Due to the proliferation of small motorized vehicles and a lot of kids on scooters and motorized bikes, I've had a number of contacts from residents about concern for the safety of the kids in the streets as they dart in and out among cars, and concern for residents on the sidewalk as they're walking and the vehicles are on the sidewalk. So what I'd like to do is ask the staff, if you're all amenable, ask the staff to do some research and see if other cities have found solutions to this problem and how they might be addressing them.
Thank you, Mr. Sunkel. Additional comments about, pardon me, the question of motorized vehicles, particularly electric bicycles and scooters? Ms. Phylla?
I think it's, addressing this proactively would be really valuable, and I was wondering if there's any education that should be considered along this way, because really, the rules of the road when you're on, are you a bike? Are you a pedestrian? Are, and really to see a young kid with no helmet, with one leg crossed over the other knee, one-handed on a scooter with a cellphone in the other hand, wow, you know, they- I don't know whether they, that just is so dangerous for everybody. And so, rules of not using your cellphone while you're on a scooter, some of those things that maybe kids, which side of the road do you, and you don't- you don't go all over the road, you don't cut in front of people to the opposite side of the road. All those rules of the road, they seem to not have any basic concept because they haven't gone through driver's ed, right? So, or been in an accident. So if we can include education as part of what we might consider providing, or ticketing, friendly warnings, I would serve, you know, I would serve on that. Anyway.
Thank you, Ms. Phylla. Ms. Harrison?
We're unique to have a bike-walk committee in Leewood, and I wonder if this is maybe, should be addressed by them first, or maybe they already have.
It's an agenda item coming up.
Well, look at that. It's like we planned it. Good call, Chuck.
Any other comments? If not, is there any- oh, Mr. Sunkel?
I would just say, while I think bike-walk is a good place to discuss this, I think staff might have better contacts with other cities and be able to do that research part of it better than the bike-walk committee could. But I think it certainly should be a topic of conversation in the bike-walk committee.
With that said, is there any objection to referring the matter to staff for additional consideration of both the educational aspects, the regulatory aspects, as well as asking staff to take staff to take input from the bike walk committee? Ms. King?
The only thing I would add is to throw in the golf carts. You know, I'm seeing the kids loading up with all the pool paraphernalia and everybody heading off in a golf cart these days. So I think that if we were looking into this, I couldn't agree more about the scooters. And, but I think that if we were looking into it, we may as well include the golf carts because those are becoming much more popular.
Mr. Sunkel?
And if I'm not mistaken, Chief, we, we already control golf carts, correct? They, they aren't allowed on streets or sidewalks?
You're partially correct. A traditional golf cart is not allowed on the streets, but there are street legal, slow-moving vehicles that, you know, are golf carts that have headlights, taillights, seatbelts, and they're, they can be registered with the state. And those can be operated on the roadways as long as it's a residential roadway of 25 miles an hour.
Thank you.
Who can, who can, who can run those? Does it have to be an adult? Do you have to have a driver's license or just anybody over 12?
No, it couldn't be a 12-year-old. It'd have to be a licensed driver.
Thanks, Chief. Ms. King?
And what, what is the public, what is the public's option when they see somebody, you know, in a golf cart that doesn't have headlights and taillights? What's the, what's the thing that we should be communicating to our residents about the proper notification?
We've already begun educational campaigns the last several years about golf carts in our social media. We've also used social media to address the scooters and things. The problem that we run into to some degree is these are younger kids and you can't ticket younger kids. They don't have driver's license. They don't, some of them can't even know your date of birth, let alone other information to write them a ticket. So it's a matter of then trying to track down parents to address it with them. And then you're, you know, you don't have a specific ordinance to charge the parents because it's not the parent that's breaking the infraction. So we're focusing more on education and things of that nature. But it's a slow-moving process, particularly now with schools out. We don't have very good venues to address large groups of kids other than, you know, educational bike rodeos or other events.
Ms. Harrison?
Dare I say that if you were able to go to the parking lot at the Country Club of Leewood or Hallbrook on junior golf day, that might be the day that a lot of these are pulling into the parking lot five minutes before tee time. But that's just where I'm seeing the activity. And I guess my concern is when I've seen four kids, what look like kids, in one golf cart. So 14 or 15 is possibly the driver if they have a permit? Or they'd have to be licensed? So they'd have to be 16?
15 years old with a learner's permit. And then they would only be limited to siblings.
Yeah. So, to siblings. Not the whole neighborhood on the golf cart. It's frightening. But we had a death out at Lautauana last year on a golf cart that rolled. And so it's, it's, it's frightening.
Well, very well. I think the best thing here is, as I mentioned before, to refer this matter and let's include golf carts in that discussion as well, as well as education, regulation, and accepting input from the bike walk committee. And then have staff bring it back to us at a time that they've had a chance to study it. So Ms. Stoddard, can you take care of that for us?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it. Are there other council member reports this evening? If not, Ms. Stoddard will come to the city administrative report. Do you wish to be heard?
Yes, Mayor. A few items for you this evening. One, we wanted to highlight our recent Emerging Leaders Academy graduates. We had six City of Leewood employees that graduated from that program. It's a professional development program for public sector employees and it's quite involved. So we are very proud of these six employees. Jesse Nash with the Police Department, Nick Ray with Public Works, our own Stacy Stromberg, the city clerk, Sarah Shaw with Park Recreation and Arts, Melissa Anderson with the Police Department, and Carrie Root with the Police Department. So congratulations to all of them. And next, we are working on kicking off the comprehensive plan and the Leewood Development Ordinance update process. Staff has been meeting with the consultant team that's led by Olson to begin this process. And the branding materials have been designed and, and are ready to go. The consulting team is developing news releases and various materials to be used in the official launch of the project, which should be coming up here in mid-July. The staff and consulting team are also finalizing an application for a steering committee. And this will be a broad cross-section of the community. And that will work on the involvement through the entire project. And then a couple of dates for your calendar. A visioning workshop, which will include that public steering committee as well as staff and elected officials, has been scheduled for September the 10th. And a two-day design charrette, which will involve an engagement, public engagement process, has been tentatively scheduled for November the 10th and 11th. And finally, a report for you that we do annually on the tricentennial fund update. This was a Leewood American Revolution bicentennial committee donation to the city in 1976. And we just wanted to report that that $1,000 donation is now worth just under $8,800 with the accrued interest that have been added. So that's the report for this year. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Ms. Stoddard, what is the end expectation with respect to that tricentennial? Are we, are we investing it through the tricentennial? So we've got 50 more years? 51 more years?
50 more years. The hope was that the then-existing city council would have a party with the money. And if there was anything left over, that they would look into investing $1,000 or $2,000 to last until the following 100 years. They would like it to go on as a commitment to the community, if I remember the minutes of the 1976.
Thank you, Ms. Bennett. So we'll, we'll just continue to invest it at the, as, as a dedication to those who came before us for the benefit of those who come after us.
And there is a list of who donated in the minutes, including many members of the then-council, planning commission, and staff.
Very good. Other questions for Ms. Stoddard?
I'm not sure we're going to make it to the party.
I know I'm not. Any other questions or comments for Ms. Stoddard? Ms. Stoddard, thank you very much. We now come to the old business portion of our agenda. We have one item on the old business and I'll call Planning Commission case 116-24. An ordinance approving rezoning from SDNCR, Planned Neighborhood Commercial Retail, to RP3, Planned Cluster Attached Residential, Preliminary Plan, Preliminary Platte for Reserve at Iron Horse Town Homes located south of 151st Street and east of Mission Road. And just to give everyone an idea of how I intend to proceed with this, we'll hear from Ms. Hurley first to explain why this matter is coming before us again. And then I'll give the members of the audience who signed in, who have an interest in this matter, an opportunity to speak. We'll actually give them four minutes each to speak this evening. At that time, I believe that counsel for the applicant is not here, but the applicant himself is. I'll give him an opportunity to respond and then we'll move on to a discussion. So with that, Ms. Hurley, please proceed.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. So as you said, this is an ordinance to approve the rezoning from SDNCR to RP3 and the preliminary plan and preliminary plat for the Reserve Iron Horse Town Homes at the southeast corner of 151st and Mission. As you'll recall, you all discussed this at your last meeting on June 16th. There was some fairly lengthy discussion amongst the council, some fairly lengthy public comment at that point. So that discussion did result in a vote of, a motion and then a vote of six to three to override the Planning Commission's recommendation of denial of the project. So that did result in the proper vote for the recommendation of denial to be overridden. However, we did not also get a corresponding motion to then approve the plan with the stipulations as presented by staff. So basically, the Planning Commission's recommendation was overridden. We did not then get the recommended stipulations on record as part of an ordinance. As you recall, that was our very late meeting and I think that vote happened at about 10:30 at night. So staff just did not catch that error and that just did not happen. So procedurally, we're just back to get that cleaned up for a new motion on the ordinance as presented that does include these stipulations that staff recommended. So since this was previously discussed at some length last month, we would just ask that the minutes of that discussion be included in the record as part of this item, just to keep track of everything altogether. So if you have any questions, I can answer those or Attorney Bennett can answer them for you as well.
Thank you, Ms. Hurley. And I would also note that I received an email at about 5:30 this evening. And of course, I thought I had it in front of me, but I don't have the identity, identity of the individual person who sent me the email. But I would note that that has been added to the record for review as well.
Man, delete.
Thank you. Thank you. And I forwarded that to each member of the governing body at the time. Questions for Ms. Hurley before we hear from the public? Dr. Castro, I'll let you go first.
Yes, can you remind us what types of commercial retail would be an option for this site if the zoning stayed the same? What is SDNCR? Is that like health clubs, grocery stores? Like what types of businesses?
Sure. So I don't have the use table in front of me to give you that full comprehensive list. But yeah, Planned Neighborhood Commercial Retail is a pretty broad and comprehensive commercial zoning district that would allow for quite a number of commercial uses, retail uses. One that was specifically mentioned as part of the specific site over the years was a convenience store or gas station location that would be allowed as, by right with that zoning district.
Right. Thank you.
Mr. Sipple?
Julie, do you still have the, the map of the layout of the dwelling units that are to be built in there? I'd just like to reaffirm my position on that by looking at the layout of the development plan.
We don't have it pulled up, but I could probably work on that for you pretty quick if you would all like to see that.
We'll go through the citizen comments and then if you would find it and get it up on the screen. Thank you.
Yep, I'll work with Stacy and we can get that pulled up for you.
Thank you, Ms. Hurley. Other questions for Ms. Hurley before she retreats to find her map? All right. Ms. Larson? Oh, I thought you, you looked like you were about to say something.
Is Mr. Ellis the developer of the Reserve at Iron Horse?
Yes.
Were you the original developer of the neighborhood? That's what I thought. Thank you.
Stacy, can you guys do that from a different computer perhaps so that the public can have the podium?
Yes.
Okay. Great. I'm going to call on the audience this evening in the order that I have on my list here. So I apologize if this is out of sequence from what you all would prefer, but my practice is to go off the list I have. Again, four minutes will be timed and with about 30 seconds remaining, the light should begin to blink up here on the podium. And we'll ask that you bring your comments to a close. And with that, I would invite Mr. Paul, Mike Paul, to come forward. Welcome, Mr. Paul. If you, you've given me your address, but if you don't mind giving it to us for the record, we'd be grateful. And we're interested in what you have to say.
Thank you. Mike Paul, I'm 3705 Iron Horse Court, resident there in the neighborhood. We at the, the residents have put together a letter and I think each of you have it. It just got distributed prior to this discussion. And we're going to get an electronic copy to you as well. There's some signatures on the back from a lot of the residents. We don't have all of them just simply due to logistics and some folks beyond vacation. But we'll get that electronically to you. I wanted to take a few minutes if I could to just summarize the letter for you and so you don't have to read it in detail at the moment. First and foremost, the purpose of the letter is to request a reconsideration of the approval for the rezoning. We were, the residents were very surprised and concerned that the adoption or the recommendation from the Planning Commission was not adopted. And we'd like to understand a little bit more as to why. But we also have several significant concerns and I've, we boiled that down into really four areas and you can see in the, in the letter. The first one is density. The neighborhood currently has 31 homes. The proposed development is going to add 18 additional residences, which is about a 60% increase in the number of, of individuals in the neighborhood. We're concerned about that, not only because of the number, but also because of the actual density. Because of the overhead utility lines that are there, these 18 units are going to be on three and a half acres of land. And they're going to be very much close together. I believe there were two variances that were obtained by the developer in order to allow this. One was a front yard setback and the other was an internal variance, which was also approved, I believe, to allow this dense apartment-style living. So we're concerned about that simply because of the number of residences, also from a standpoint of traffic in the area. Now, right now, there are 18 residences proposed. That would be if you, if you assumed two cars per residence, that's about 36 more cars in the neighborhood. The reason that's important is because we already have issues getting in and out of the neighborhood during rush hour. There's only one entrance off of Mission Road and it is difficult to get in and out of there as it stands. And the, the entry into that residence would be off of Iron Horse Court. Second of all, the residences that we've seen in terms of the renderings, we've seen a rendering of, at least I've only seen one rendering of the, the actual homes themselves. Our neighborhood is a very nice neighborhood. It's homes that are north of a million dollars. And this is a departure from what is in our neighborhood today. These are basically apartment-style living. In addition to that, 10 of the residences are going to be facing north. So those of us that are looking north are going to be looking at the back of those residences. And I don't know what that means in terms of what we'll be seeing, but we're concerned about it being something other than what we are used to in the neighborhood now. The neighborhood now, that area is heavily wooded and there's a lot of wildlife in the area as well, which is, this is obviously going to be a big change to that. In addition to that, the residences themselves, and I want to read this to you, that came to us at the la, I believe at the last meeting that was presented, that the developer stated that the units are proposed to be constructed as single-story and two-story homes with basements. And I believe at the last meeting, on the June 16th meeting, that the individuals for the developer had indicated that these are actually going to have separate units that are going to be housed by elevators. So they're a departure from what we understood was originally going to be the, the style of them. So we're concerned about that because we're, the developer had stated that the, the residences would be in the $700,000 to $800,000 range. I don't know that there's anything that keeps the developer from, from moving off of that and having a much lower cost, a lower price point on these residences. So we're very concerned about that. The third item we're concerned about is drainage. Right now, we already have a lot of wet areas in that, in that proposed development space. We have water that comes across the road during rain and, and the first house in the neighborhood already has water problems from drainage. I understand there's going to be a water detention system that's put in, but we don't really have a good sense for what that means and if that's really going to solve whatever new water issues are presented. The last item I'll mention is around tree removal. As we had understood from the, there's a Leewood replacement ordinance from 2019 that requires developers to replace trees that are displaced. As we understand, all of the trees are going to be removed from this area. There was an article in the Johnson County Post December 3rd this last year that stated that the southeast corner of 151st and Mission would require the developer to plant 192 trees under the current ordinance 50% rule. We have not seen, and maybe it's there, we just haven't seen it, but we have not seen any type of detailed plot plan in terms of what the tree replacement would look like. So that's a summary of the letter. Two things we would request. One is a reconsideration of this, of this approval. And second, to understand why the Planning Commission's recommendation was not adopted. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. We appreciate your time. Next, I'll call on, and again, I apologize if I mispronounce this, but Joe Varian- Next, I'll call on, and again, I apologize if I mispronounce this, but Joe Variano. Mr. Variano, welcome.
I won't take up, uh, I won't take up too much of your time. Mr. Paul did a much better job of elucidating our issues anyway. Joe Variano, we live at 3609 Iron Horse Court.
Welcome.
We've lived there for 25 years now. Just, and we really want to reiterate, we're very concerned about the water drainage. I know there's a catchment basin, but that area is wet all the time. I remember as a kid, I used to go out there and fish when the pond was five acres. It's a spring-fed pond, and the springs that fed the pond are still there. They surface occasionally in our yards, and then we have to drain the water to get it out of the yard. So I'm a little concerned that the water is ultimately going to involve transit into Negro Creek. And when it rains, Negro Creek is, it's not quite like Curville, but it's the Leewood version of Curville. The, the water's up, and my, most of my neighbors that live a little closer to the golf course have had issues with water. So we're, we're very concerned that if this, whether if this catch basin gets filled up, or if the soil doesn't drain properly, where is the water going to go? It's either going to go across Iron Horse Court or under it. Either way, I don't think that's where we want it to wind up. Mike mentioned the traffic. We're very concerned. There's a lot of children in the neighborhood, and we're concerned about the coming and going on the street. Neighborhood aesthetic, I don't know, these are like, these are almost like co-op units, and that they're built per floor, they're not vertical, and I just, the, the density and the, the construction just seems all wrong for the neighborhood. I, I don't really see where there's anything comparable to that, and I'm not sure why we'd want to be the first to come up with that kind of a plan. That's pretty much all I've got. I appreciate your time and your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Variano. Again, I am going to apologize right off the bat, but either Mr. or Ms. Del Pozo? Ms. Del Pozo? Did I came even close to it? Thank you and welcome.
Thank you very much for having us here. My main concern about there is the safety, because there's a lot of children just playing the street. We don't have many cars around there using that cul-de-sac. We have a busy street already, 151st and Mission. And now, if we're getting an open 18 more houses, how many more people are going to be there? Safety of our childrens, where they are going to work, where they are going to play? People that walking, all the residents, even the neighbor residents, they come walking around there. So I'm concerning about that, and maybe getting some consideration about what they are going to do.
Thank you, Ms. Del Pozo. Appreciate it. Ian Morris? Welcome, Mr. Morris.
I'm a resident of Iron Horse Court, 3401. I think there's a number of concerns that, at this moment in time, as you've come off 151st and Mission and go down the road, there's, the right-hand lane goes into the golf course, so the center lane is, is where all the traffic comes. They turn in and go immediately into the center reservation, and then we just get, you know, 200 yards down the road and have to turn left. It's incredibly difficult, and, and the amount of times you sit there and there's a car coming up behind you, you think you're going to go run into the back of. And now we're going to have more and more traffic going in there, not just with the construction that's going to be going on, but also, you know, the, the new homeowners if this development passes. It's a huge concern that, you know, we're going to allow some of it from safety. I'm also a, a bit of a loss as to why the, the planning refused it, and then it came here and got overturned and approved. It doesn't really make sense to me that you don't seem to have acknowledged what they've said. And I, and I also really am a bit confused about the fact that when you read what the developers asked for, we said some townhomes that don't appear to be townhomes, there's not a lot of this. It's almost as if they're townhomes with elevators that have got condo, condominiums in them or something. It's just, it feels a bit loose, as if somebody's trying to get, planning for one thing, to say, right, I've got it at this grade, and then actually I'm going to notch it down to do something different. And I'd just like you to, you know, reassess it, and have a vote, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. And John McGrath. Welcome, Mr. McGrath. If you could give us your address, we'd be grateful.
Thank you, everyone. 3701 Iron Horse Court, John McGrath. And I mainly want to echo what my neighbors here have shared and their concerns. I think I will share with you all that, I want to communicate, we're not anti-development here. We want to find a solution that's a win-win-win, a win for the developer, a win for the city, and a win for the residents at Iron Horse Court, and we just don't feel like this is a win for us. Hopefully it's a, clearly it's a win for the developer. Hopefully it's a win for the, the city. I'm, I'm, I have a hard time believing that these units are going to go for three-quarters of a million dollars. So I'm not sure it's going to be a win for the city, but it's for sure not a win for us, and so our, our request is that we do a little bit more work here, put a little more effort in to find a solution that's a win-win-win for everybody involved. So thank you all for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. McGrath. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to be heard on this matter? Uh, have I lost Ms. Hurley? There's Ms. Hurley.
I think we got a site plan for you here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, you'll have an opportunity.
That's, that's what I was looking for. Thank you very much. I'll wait for Mr. Ellis to make his comments, and then I'll make mine.
Okay.
Thank you. And I will note that Mr. Musial does send his apologies as attorney for Mr. Ellis. He happens to be out of the country. He spent the Fourth of July on the Omaha Beach, enjoying that as a place to celebrate the Fourth of July, and called me a couple of times, or texted me a couple of times to express his, his apologies to the governing body, and asked the governing body not, not take the fact that he's not here in person as a lack of interest in any way, shape, or form. Mr. Ellis is here, who is Mr. Musial's client. Mr. Ellis, please step forward, give us your address, and please share with us your thoughts.
My name is Saul Ellis, 14713 Beverly Hills Park, Kansas. I'm a little nervous, first time in 60 years of building, because I didn't plan on being here this evening, and I, I got an email about 3 o'clock in the afternoon saying, come to a meeting, come to a meeting this evening, and I didn't even know what it was about. As far as I'm concerned, we were zoned. I saw the vote, and I thought we were completely zoned, and I guess because of some sort of a miscalculation or something, we have to go through this again. I've heard, and all of us have heard, for three hours, I think, a month ago, all the complaints, and I understand. I don't know if all of you know me over the years. I'm probably the third-largest developer in Leewood, besides Crow Brothers and maybe, maybe J.C. Nichols. I've developed more projects in Leewood than anybody else. This will be, probably, this will be my last project. I've never done a project in Leewood that isn't an award winner, and it's for the city of Leewood, it's for the people of Leewood. It's to, it's to take care of something that the city needed, from Hallbrook to all the other projects. This is a difficult piece of land, small piece of land, it's got all kinds of problems, the power lines and the slopes and everything. And I've spent a year designing this project, so it'd be the most beautiful, beautiful project that I could put on this piece of land. And there's a huge need for it in the city. There's a lot of people in the city of Leewood that are getting older, like me. They're ready to get rid of their home, a big home, just buy a smaller home. They want to stay in the city of Leewood. They don't want to spend a million-three for a villa. They want something less expensive. They maybe have a home in Arizona or Florida or somewhere else, but they want to stay in Leewood because their kids are here, and they're here a couple, two, three months out of the year. And this is a perfect project for them. And they keep talking about this being a, a less expensive project. I don't know if you've looked at the cost of construction nowadays, but these units, which are very nice size, maybe 15, 16, 1700 square feet, are going to be, they're going to be under a million dollars, because that's what, but I'm trying to keep them as low as I can, under a million dollars. But they're very expensive units. I imagine they'll run 850, 950 when we're done, and then people take a unit and they add on to it and make it nicer, even nicer. So this is a beautiful project, and they talk about zoning. This is minimally zoned, people-wise, for, for this piece of land. And I designed it that way. We could have put a lot more units on it, but I, I wanted to keep it as small, as small as I can, and make it as, as most livable and comfortable as I possibly could for this, for this little difficult, difficult piece of land. So we went through all this, three hours. I thought we were zoned, and I've come here, my lawyer's out of town, I wasn't legally rep, I am not legally represented now, so I've told you some of my thoughts, and I hope that those of you who voted for it will vote for it again, so that we can get this passed and get this started. Incidentally, your planning, your planning department, they thought, they always thought it was, they thought it was zoned already, and they've called me and asked me when the final plans are coming in, so they can, so they can plan their time schedules on, on when I can bring in the final plans for this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ellis. Are there questions for Mr. Ellis?
Yeah.
Ms. Larson.
Do we have a picture of the retaining wall? I don't recall that from the materials the first time.
Of the retaining wall?
The retaining wall?
I don't have a picture of it, and it really, it, it's designed, you know, they talked about, they talked about drainage. This is one project that will make all the, all the drainages that we've had over the years work. We're putting it all underground, we're putting it all in systems, there'll be no drainage problems at all. The retaining wall will be probably in stone. I don't have a picture of it, but I will, I want to keep the, the whole contours of everything we're doing there the same as, as the project is. So the stonework of the entranceway will be on the stonework of everything that we do in this project, so it'll, it'll just blend in. The only thing different about this project is the rest of the community, and I, I developed the rest of the community, I'm very proud of it, I built half the homes in it, is that it's, it's a different marketplace. It's just for, it's just for people that want to, that want to downsize instead of upsize the big home. I won't be surprised when we're all done, if several people in, in the subdivision will be calling me to downsize one of these, stay in their subdivision.
Thank you.
Mr. Siple.
Mr. Ellis, I'm all for development, as long as it sort of fits, fits the pattern in the city of Leewood, which we've come to expect in the last 20, 30 years. And the item that bothers me the most is at the entryway, by the community garden or by the, by the low-level area, is the first thing an enter, an entering car will see is the back of several units. And I, for the life of me, don't see that happening anywhere else in Leewood with developments. Now, maybe you could correct me, but with, with Aventino, and with Lashbrooke's deal, and with some of the other new developments in town, typically, when you enter a Leewood neighborhood, past the monument, you see the front, you see the grass, you see flowers and bushes and a front porch, very welcoming. And that's what causes a lot of people to say, I like Leewood. It's safe and it's nice. I, I, I can't get past those first three or four homes where you're going to be looking at the backs, and it won't necessarily be trash cans, I understand that, but it's the back, it's not the entry level, it's not the showpiece that we've come to expect. So I, I, I'm sort of opposed to this, and I just wondered if you and your architects could relay out the plat and have more, all front entries along the, the entering street. I assume those that are in the dotted lines on the right will face the street. And, but I, I just don't think it's fair to the people that live there now to see the backs of houses.
Let me explain to you. Number one, the landscaping, in the first place, to, to see any building here, you're going to look at 200, 250 feet of green space before you even see a building. That's all evergreen easements. We can't, we can't build anything on it. So, and it'll be burned, it'll be beautiful, it'll be, so you're looking at a park even before, even before you see these, before you see these units. Second thing is, if you look at the landscaping that we've put in, it's five times the landscaping of every project I've ever done in Leewood. Trees and bushes and, I mean, it's just all over the place. So between the landscaping and the park-like setting, this, you won't see anything around this thing but a park all the way around it, for 250 feet of, of sprinkled park setting. I couldn't do it any nicer than that. And I can't, I can't redesign this because it's so small, this is the only way that I could get the building. I've been working on this for years. This is the only way that I could get these buildings to work. But these particular buildings, if you looked at them, they're beautiful. I mean, they're, they're, they're French provincial, and even the side or the back of one of these buildings is, is good-looking. Much better-looking than some of the other buildings I've built in the city.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Siple. Was there a comment this side? Ms. Harrison, question for Mr. Ellis.
So I understand that 25 years ago, you built the other side of the street, correct?
Yes.
Or 30?
Yes.
Okay, and so I'm curious as to why at that time you didn't incorporate this into your, your vision, and dare I, I think it's because it's not a very desirable piece of land to develop, and so it hasn't been. And I feel like you're trying to put something here that isn't a great fit for this kind of property, as, as Mr. Supple, as Mr. Siple has said. But, but maybe you could enlighten me as to why 25 years ago, this wasn't?
Okay. When we bought the piece of land, that piece of land was zoned. It was zoned commercial, and it was on the other side. The problem, one of the problems with this piece of land is got, it's got this huge evergreen easement that runs through here, that you can't do anything with. And the other side was, when we bought it, was zoned. And the other thing is, when we bought this piece of land, we gave all kinds of, of, of land to the city, so that they would be happy. We gave them, I think, 18, 19 acres of land free to the city so they could finish their golf course. Also, when we went to the top, we gave them anything they wanted, land along 151st Street free, so that they didn't have to, so they didn't have to pay a lot of money, so that when they want to develop, when they want to develop, redevelop 151st Street, that the land would be there. So I've done everything I know how to do to satisfy the city with this very difficult piece of land. It was, it was zoned, I couldn't, I couldn't change the zone, it was already zoned when we bought it.
Ms. Kane.
Somebody brought up the fact, can you, can you refresh our memory? Are these going to be townhomes, or are these going to be condos? Because in my world of residential real estate, there is a big difference.
I don't know the difference.
Well...
Townhomes, villas, there are, anything that the Homes Association takes over is a, is basically a condominium. I've done thousands of units in my life, they're all, they're all the same. You have to have a Homes Association that takes care of all the maintenance and all the everything. As, as the unit gets more, a little more dense, the Homes Association has more things to do. They have to paint the outside of the buildings, they have to take care of the roof, but they're all the same. Town, I've done them all, they're, we just, we just name them different. They're all condominiums.
Well, in the eyes of financiers, I just had this happen, where I just had a client who thought they were buying a townhome, it turned out through the appraisal process that it's actually a condominium, and when they ran the report about the condominium, they found out the financial reserves of the HOA would not support the condominium, and so it turned, the term is unwarrantable condominium. So I had a client back out at the 11th hour because she couldn't get financing for an unwarrantable condominium. Now... Now, I'm with you, Mr. Ellis, I've, I've never heard of that before, it was first time in eighteen years that ever happened to me. So there is a distinction, I know that there is a distinction in the finance world and in the appraisal world of whether it's a condominium and that's a townhome. So I do think that's a valid, the valid, valid point.
Okay.
It may not have been twenty-five years ago, but it is, it is now. So, but you're right, in some, there's all over this city, there's, there's developments where it, they look exactly alike, but some of them are townhomes, called townhomes, some of them are called condominiums. There's hybrid communities all over the, the community, that's, but I, I had nothing to do with any of those, but we do have something to do with this one, that's why I bring up the question, because it is a valid, it is a valid comment.
I understand. Let me explain it to you. You've zoned a lot of duplexes in the city, you call them twin villas. A twin villa, basically, and they're all over, the last three or four big projects you've done, all have all these twin villas going on. A twin villa is basically the same thing as a townhome. When we zoned it, when we, not zoned, when we survey it, we survey it so each unit is sold as a legal description. So you buy a legal description and you sell a legal description, okay? But you don't own, in a duplex or a fourplex or any kind, you don't own the whole, you don't own everything. The land outside, you own everything to the sheet-rocked wall. Everything outside of the sheet-rocked wall, the condominium is in charge of.
The Homes Association is in charge.
The Homes Association. So you have to start out and put enough money in the Homes Association so you never have to worry about your client, about anything going wrong. But if, in this particular building, if the roof goes bad, you don't get a roofer, you call the Homes Association. And the Homes Association gets a roofer and puts it in and takes it out of their package. If your driveway cracks, you call the Homes Association. If your backyard, if the sod dies, you call your Homes, it's all, and they're all the same legally. Now, you can call them whatever you want, a duplex is a, is a garden villa, and a, and a villa, and then what's, what's a four, we call them townhomes, they're all condominiums, basically. Condominium means that it's condominiumized, that the Homes Association takes care of all the things from your walls outside.
Right. They call that studs out.
Your what?
They call that studs out. The studs of the walls out.
Right, right.
That's, that's the legal term, that's the legal term, but I...
And that's, and that's just the new way we're building. That's a new way of building. And it's gotten more and more than that, because, you know, the single-family house, we keep going farther and farther out, and the people want to come back and they'll settle for a condominium instead of a single-family. That's just, and it's all overly, it's getting to be all over Leewood. I did a beautiful project, I don't even remember it, forty years ago, Huntington Farms. Anybody remember Huntington Farms? Very popular, very, a house goes on the market today, and that's the same, same project as this is. This is much nicer than that, but it's the same project. Duplexes, threeplexes, fourplexes, it's at one hundred and thirteenth and Row.
Thank you, Mr. Ellis. Ms. Harrison?
Thank you. I would argue that a side-by-side townhome is different than a one-over-the-other, whatever we're calling these villas, in that...
Not legally.
Well, in that, an upstairs neighbor who's making noise is different than somebody on the other side of one shared wall, rather than somebody being above every room in your house.
Okay.
So I would argue that's a different market. Now, my next...
Let me talk, let me talk about that.
Okay.
That used to be a problem. It's not a problem anymore. We have ways now of, of designing the units so that there's, you can't hear anything from down below or side by side. The way they design the, the way they design these, the units now, and that's just the way we do them, between the, the new methods, that the way that there, you can't hear anything.
Well, that's interesting, because I spoke to somebody that lives in a unit like I'm just, like you're looking to build at one hundred and fifty-ninth and Row, and she can hear every step her upstairs neighbor takes.
How old is the project?
It's one hundred and fifty-ninth and Row, it's a wilderness, less than twenty years old.
Okay. In the last five years, nobody has ever had that problem again.
Interesting.
I've done a lot of high-rise, I did, I don't know if you've heard of, I did four thirty-three Ward Parkway on Ward, have you heard of that, four thirty-three Ward Parkway? Never, ever heard a sound anywhere. And it's seven stories on top of each other. So that, that's not a problem.
Ms. Philip?
I think that one of the questions the neighbors ask is, how did we get to the conclusion of overriding the planning commission? And that was because we had the drawings of the, of the units that hadn't been there previously, shared with the city, with the planning commissioner. So that was perceived as a difference-maker in terms of the information that we had that the planning commission did not have. I do appreciate all the citizens coming in here, and I guess I'm kind of bemused that the seven hundred and fifty thousand is now eight hundred and fifty to one point one million, which I'm not surprised, I think that was kind of the, we were all wondering how you're going to do to seven fifty. I think that at a minimum, I mean, we can certainly take a vote on whether to approve or not, but I really think at a minimum, this needs to be remanded back to the planning commission, so that they can see the drawings we can see, and the citizens can have the planning commission review it, because there's a lot of, and I know you're not, you're not at final, where some of these things get decided, but sometimes when, when a land doesn't appear to be buildable, maybe it shouldn't be built. And I don't know if that's the answer, or it's just the number of units, or any of the concerns that have been raised, but maybe this was fortuitous that we didn't approve it at the time without the citizens having more input, and, and now, at this point in time, maybe we ought to consider, maybe we should have at that night said, send it back to the planning commission to let them have the information we saw with the wisdom of their process, and we just skipped a step there.
Okay. Speaking of skipping steps, let's, let's finish the questions of Mr. Ellis, and then we can go on to a discussion. So, any other questions for Mr. Ellis? All right, Mr. Ellis, thank...
I'd say one other thing.
Yes, sir.
Everything, after hours of talking to the planning commission, and they didn't see everything that you saw, and it was, I guess, we didn't do a good job to them. Saying that, their biggest deal of everything was density. They wanted density, density, that's the only thing that they held their hat on, was that there was more than two to the acre. And I can't get away from that, it's a narrow, little, small piece of land, and you have to have so many units to even do the project, so, and, and to do this kind of a project, you know, because they're going to be very, very nice, but, and you have to have it nice enough so that you can have a Homes Association that can handle it. You can't do that with few units, you have to have the money there.
Maybe you can have a merger, and you build, maybe you can have, you can build single families and merge with the existing HOA.
Thank you, Mr. Ellis. Any other comments? Thank you. So now, now we do come to the discussion portion of, of the case, looking to Ms. Bennett here. What are our options, Ms. Bennett?
This was kind of brought back to you just as a matter of form after the last vote. However, if there is desire to reconsider what we, what you did three weeks ago, that would need to be brought in the form of a motion to reconsider by one of the parties who were on the prevailing side. So there were, if I remember, it was six to three, so it would need to be brought by one of the six, in other words, indicating they were changing their mind. It would then, we would then need to schedule consideration of the reconsideration on the next agenda, the way Robert's Rules works, you could not reconsider it tonight, because reconsideration was not on tonight's agenda. Consideration of this ordinance was on tonight's agenda. So if you want to reconsider what you did three weeks ago, the motion would be to schedule reconsideration of our previous vote on our next agenda. And then this ordinance and everything else would be continued out. So that's one. If you reconsider it, then there would be no vote on the attached ordinance, that would be, that ordinance would be continued out. Your other is to, if that, if there is a motion to reconsider by one of the six who voted in favor of it, and that motion fails, then you would go on to considering this particular ordinance, which would still require the six supermajority to pass.
Is, is remand an option?
After reconsideration, it would be. If you, you've already determined that, you have already voted to override what the planning commission did. So it should come back next time, if it's reconsidered, then you could remand, you could affirm, or you could override.
Okay. So with that, I'll open the floor to discussion here. We've heard some discussion already, I don't mind repeating it if you'd like to, but, Ms. Harrison, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarification, Patty, that's helpful. As I mentioned earlier, a mile away at one hundred and fifty-ninth and Row are similar properties to what's being described on the market for three hundred and twenty to three hundred and forty thousand dollars. Those units have use of a pool and a well-appointed clubhouse, as well as other amenities in the neighborhood, none of which I'm seeing in this plan. So I have a hard time understanding how this isn't going to come back to us sometime with a, a new plan, because I don't understand how eight hundred to nine hundred thousand dollars is going to sell for this kind of a unit, this small of a unit, the numbers do not add up to me. And what I've learned in ten years is when the numbers don't add up to me, we get a final plan a year or two asking for us to make something more dense. So I, I would, I would like us to consider reconsideration of this.
Other comments? Dr. Castor?
Yeah, I had a question for Ms. Hurley. So, as I remember, the density question, if you included the evergy easement, then the density was within the, the Leewood Development Ordinance, is that correct?
So the density as proposed, with this, kind of whichever way you slice it, does meet the requirements of the RP three zoning district.
So the, the current plan follows all of our Leewood Development Ordinance at this time?
Yes, so I believe the two deviations that they requested, as one of the speakers alluded to, was in regards to front setbacks on this, which would be kind of internal to this, on the internal cul-de-sac, and then a zero sideyard setback, which is completely standard for a multifamily, whether it's condo or townhome type unit, so that those can then be split up individually and sold individually, be that kind of dividing-party wall, zero setback. Those were the two deviations that were requested as part of this, it did not have anything to do with the density.
Okay. Would you be able to put that map back on the screen here, so that we could see? Perfect. And again, this is just me just kind of thinking out loud here, so if we keep the zoning how it is for commercial, so if that street, let's say, was existing, potentially, they could have a gas station on the cul-de-sac and a fitness center on the north side of the property, potentially?
Those uses would both be allowed within the SD and CR zoning district that is currently in place on the property, that's correct.
Okay. And again, I appreciate the citizens and their concerns, but the way I heard was that traffic and the view of the back of the properties was very important for them, and if we continue to keep it the same zoning, then potentially there'd be a lot more traffic in and out of that street, because I think, as we talked about before, there's no way to have another entrance off of Mission Road or one hundred and fifty-first with the thing.
That's correct.
So, all right, thank you.
Ms. Larson?
I, I think my thoughts are kind of tracking with Dr. Castor in that, because this property is zoned commercial, retail, I view this use as less, less problematic for the neighborhood. The reserve at Iron Horse Neighborhood, it's beautiful. Our son used to have a friend that lived in the, in the neighborhood, and they have since moved to California, the dolling houses. But we used to drive in there regularly, it's beautiful, the houses are so well-maintained. And Mr. Ellis developed this beautiful neighborhood, and he has many neighborhoods that are beautiful in Leewood. That also helps me to have confidence that what he is proposing to put on this problematic piece of property will be beautiful. Because I can't think of a development that he has done that is not of the highest quality and has not been well-received in an amenity in Leewood. And if we were to leave it commercial, that would really, boy, if we had a convenience store, fitness, you know, talk about traffic, you know, that would really generate traffic for these homes, these beautiful homes, and, and also impact their value to a greater degree than what this quality development would be. Thinking about other, some of the comments from the, the homeowners have been that they, they can't think of another place in Leewood where we would have this, but I, my mind goes to Regent's Park, that's currently being developed south of one hundred and thirty-fifth Street. Another, it's beautiful construction, it's quality construction, and we're going to have single-family homes right by twin villas and townhomes, and it's a whole diversified housing development that I think will be very well-received, and I, I have friends that are thinking about buying in there right now. So for me, those are the, the, the primary factors that I would continue to support the, the proposed development and, and would be ready to vote for that tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Larson. Other discussion? Ms. Kane?
To answer the homeowner's question, one of the things that, or two of the things that appealed to me, and I've thought, if, if you ever listened to our meetings and you've heard me speak, we are fighting, or I'm fighting desperately for ownership, number one, and heights and density, that's actually three. So the Village East project that was just approved between one hundred and thirty-fifth and one hundred and thirty-third Street is going to have twenty-five hundred people living in that development that is coming, and it has been approved, and predominantly rentals, predominantly rentals. And, and that gives me great angst, and I, I voted no every single time when that came before us. But, so those are hot buttons for me, to answer your questions, is the heights is fitting, in my opinion anyway, with the surrounding area, and that the fact that these, these are not rentals is a huge hot button for my, my brain. I do have a little bit of consternation this, this evening with the, the answer about condos versus town, townhomes, and I don't know, does the city, Julie, does the city get involved? I know we have to plat them, and we plat them individually, and where the lot lines are, and is it studs out, is it, you know, where, you know, zero lot lines and all that kind of stuff, but does our city have, and it never came up until last week when this blew up in my face on a project I was working on. I never, to be honest, I never thought about it before, because I never had it blow up in my face before. But do we get involved in that at all? What, like I said, in the finance world, there's a big difference. And it has to do with the HOA, and it has to do with the warrantable of the product and, and finance, it's all tied together. So do we get involved in that at all? Can we, can we write a stipulation that these stay one or the other, and it's very clear? Because it was anything but clear for my client last week.
Patty could probably elaborate, but no, we do not get involved in the legalities of the ownership structure of multifamily housing units like that, or really any HOA restrictions, the city does not get involved in those.
This wasn't in our city, by the way, this was in a further west, but, and like I said, there were, side-by-side, they had, they look identical, you couldn't tell the difference until you got to the appraisal portion, and some of them were platted condos and some were platted townhomes, and therein lied the problem. So I didn't know if we even got involved, it never occurred to me before. Should we be getting involved? I don't know.
I don't know.
And I'm not sure this helps Ms. Kane. The city has a standard stipulation, and in this case, it was in stipulation 13 from the packet, from last packet. The owner applicant must establish a funding mechanism to maintain, repair, and replace common areas, common area improvements, including not limited streets, walls, stormwater. That, and there's a deed restriction saying it will carry forward and those types of things. It doesn't necessarily get into HOA property. It's more making sure that the normal public improvements are taken care of, but it is to fund it. We don't get involved in the funding. We don't double-check it. We don't do some fiscal present value calculation to make sure it's there. That's getting a little bit too involved in someone's private business, but we do have a stipulation that they're supposed to have it funded.
Do we have, do we get involved in the plating, though? Whether it's platted as a townhome or it's platted as a condo?
And I'm not sure there's a different in plating. I think that normally it's called a condominium plat when it's studs out, what you were talking about when it's wall-to-wall inside. Normally, I think it's, I look at the statute, it might actually be condominium and townhouse act. It's, I think it's all under the same statute when you're conveying the inside of the building, but we can double-check that before the final plat comes to you.
Thank you. And again, I don't want to make anything more confusing or more laborious, but I was just wondering. But again, for the sake of the homeowners, the reason I was supportive initially was because it was ownership and because of the height and how, and what the other, if it stayed commercial, what it could have been, which, again, we've been trying our very, very hardest to allow or to guide the development of the remaining portion of Leewood in a way that is harmonious as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kane. Any other discussion? Yes, Ms. Phila.
Just a question of specifying. We can't control whether a single-family owner decides to rent their unit, and we can't really control whether these become rentals or owned and then rented. I mean, is there, there's nothing in our codes that say you have to, once you state that it's going to be a townhome bought by an individual, if they want to turn around and rent it, they can.
That's correct. With any type of residential property, the city can't legally dictate that.
Okay, thank you.
Unless the HOA dictates it. The HOA can dictate whether their units are rented or not.
Yeah, I believe in HOA can, and again, Patty can jump in, but a city cannot.
Thank you. So we come to a place of emotion. Is there a motion to be had? Anybody wish to make a motion?
I don't know if I can make a moment, a motion to reconsider. I don't, I forget how.
The motion to reconsider should be done by someone who was on the prevailing side.
Was I on the prevailing side?
I believe you were not.
Okay.
No, just to refresh memories, the three council members who voted against the motion previously were Councilmember Phila, Sipple, and Harrison.
So in that case, if none of those who voted in the affirmative last time wished to file a motion of consideration, or wished to move for reconsideration, I would suggest that it would be appropriate for a motion to approve the ordinance rezoning the property from SDNCR to RP3, along with Ms. Bennett. What else would you like to be in the motion? I don't want to do this a third time.
A motion to pass this ordinance effectuates the override. So you could be a motion to override the planning commission's recommendation and pass this ordinance with the staff's stipulations.
Thank you, Ms. Bennett. So is there a motion to be made there?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Sunkel. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Larson. This does recall a rule call vote, and I believe it's a vote of the governing body as opposed to the city council, and with that, I would ask the clerk to call the rule, please.
Councilmember Sipple?
Nay.
Councilmember Kane?
Aye.
Councilmember Harrison?
Nay.
Councilmember Larson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gayad?
Aye.
Councilmember Castor? Councilmember Sunkel?
Aye.
And Councilmember Phila?
Nay.
And the chair votes yes, so the vote is six to three. The motion carries, and the ordinance is adopted. So now we come to new business this evening. The first of the items on the new business is to accept the 2025 first quarter financial report. Mr. Cobby, can you tell us how we're doing financially?
We're doing good.
We're doing good?
Thank you.
I'm glad to hear that, sir.
No, the, that is the short answer. We're actually pretty much what I had for estimates and projections, both from sales tax for this year, year-to-date. I included the April report. Since the first quarter report only has one month in it, really, so, but through April, we were running about 2.5% ahead, so I feel like we're kind of right on where we want to be, and should things change dramatically, we'll let you know as soon as we can, but the budget, as we did revise estimates, is pretty much based on staying in the trend we're at now, or where we thought we were at when we were looking at it, and we've stayed on that trend. So on the expenditure side, I've seen kind of thing, although we have a limited number of months built that you see, as I went through, just again, looking at the budget and making sure there weren't any big holes, and other than adjustment I made for those two transfers that rolled over from last year to this year for the risk management fund and the IT equipment fund, everything else is on, so I just made the adjustment in the expected, and everything's in really good shape. We're a little behind, or a little ahead on revenues and a little behind on expenditures. That's where I want to be.
And I very much appreciate the memorandum you did with the packet. It helped to instill all those numbers that were in the financial report, so that's very good. Was there anything, is there anything in there? Two questions I have. Usually I wait till the last to ask questions, so I'll ask mine first this time. Number one, is there anything about a cyclical nature that would create an expectation you in some other part of the year that either revenues will dip or expenditures will spike?
There are cyclical natures within the year, and in both charts for the sales tax, month-by-month, you can see that that dotted line goes up and down by month. I use a rolling average of month expenditure, or of month revenues, so you'll see at the end of the year, typically they go up. That'll depend on how many Christmas days are in November versus December and those kind of things, but those are usually our two highest months. So I take all those things into consideration. Expenditures are the same way. We have some things that hit beginning of the year, and then typically, when we have expenditures for projects at the end of the year, some of those hit later on, and I have both an all-funds kind of calculation I do, plus a general fund calculation. So both the revenues, when I do expect it, they are not just to divide by 12. If we were going to do that, I could just print out the report out of the system, but to me, they move enough that I want to make sure I've accounted for those, and we have several expenditures, like insurance, that hit on quarters, and you're better off, you know, kind of knowing where historically those have hit, so.
Second question, was there anything surprising to you in what happened in the first quarter? Is it pretty much what you expected?
What was surprising to me is that we were so close to estimates, to be honest. I'm usually not that good, so I'm better lucky than good, but no, it's been somewhat uneventful kind of quarter.
Thank you. Other questions? Mr. Sipple?
Thank you very much. Don, and this is not a criticism. I know your department has been short-staffed, very busy with the budget and the CIP and computer systems, but it is the first week of July, and we're looking at the end of the first quarter report. When do you anticipate the second quarter report numbers rolling out?
We would normally have them about at the second meeting after the end of the, after the end of the month, so June 30th report would be the second meeting in August, and I think we'll at least be on that.
August or July?
Let me see. No, because we have to, we have to do all the calculating and everything. We try, we really don't have all the information or have everything calculated by the end, so I shoot for the first meeting in August, but we don't have, I guess we don't have a first meeting this time, so we try to shoot for the first meeting in that second month, but this time it'll be the second.
Look forward to seeing it.
Be back.
Dr. Castor?
So just a question, is our news finance software, is that fully implemented right now?
No, no, it's, I mean, certain parts of it are. There's still some other things that have to be done, and a lot of that's because the permitting and licensing piece that marries with us, so a lot of their cash receipts and permits they sell, that integrates with our system, and so we've had to wait on a few of those things to put those in place, and then a couple of upgrades that we were going to have to help save staff time, we have not been able to do, because we kind of need to wait for that piece to be in place as well, so. But from a reporting side, the ability to kind of have this report canned, be able to regenerate quicker and get out to you quicker, that's going to take us into the budget software. Essentially, that's a reporting software as well, and we need to get the budget book done before we get those done, but we'll get those written, and these reports should come more timely once that's written.
And would you expect, once the software is fully implemented, that your estimates will continue to get better and better over time?
I would say the estimate parts, probably the software will help some with that, but not a lot. It's more of how quickly we get you the accounting reports, and then the ability to give you quicker, more timely reports on the expenditures, so both revenue and expenditure kind of reports that we'll be able to generate, and you can see, it'll look more like the budget, and you'll be able to look at it and see where we're doing on those expenditures a little quicker.
Very good, thank you.
And there's a transparency piece as well, that you would be able to dig into some of the other reports that we provide you and do those online, so there's a lot of pieces to do. It's just, it takes a little bit of time, so.
Thank you. Other questions for Mr. Cobby? If not, is there a motion to accept the financial report as presented by staff?
So moved.
Second?
Thank you, Dr. Castor. Thank you, Mr. Sipple. Additional discussion? All those in favor of accepting the 2025 first quarter financial report, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
It's a roll call vote.
Those opposed, same sign. The ayes have it, and the first quarter financial report for 2025 is unanimously accepted. Second item of new business we have is a charter ordinance exempting the city of Leewood from the provisions of KSA 12-1608 and KSA 12-1609 relating to reports by the treasurer and providing substitute and additional provisions on the same subject. Is this Ms. Stoddard or Ms. Stromberg? Ms. Stromberg? You wish to be heard?
Yes. So this charter ordinance is kind of helping us to clean up a little bit. The state statute does not uniformly apply to all the cities in this case, so we are requesting that the city be allowed to post these reports to the city's website or to the city newspaper. We are already posting these reports, our financial reports, to our city website. Feel that we're being able to reach much more of the public that way as well.
Okay, I'm sorry, can you just summarize one more time what the difference is, what we're moving from to with this?
That we would have to post these reports in the newspaper, so we're asking to post them to our city's website.
Okay, rather than to the newspaper?
Correct. Either or.
And Mr. Powell and I did discuss this a little bit, so the statute says you have to post them in a newspaper of generals, published in the city, and if not one, then in the county, which would be at this time, the Johnson County Post, which is one of our official newspapers, but are also official newspapers, the website, which is maybe more easily accessible than the paper version of any of our newspapers, and so I think Mr. Powell and Ms. Stromberg wanted to make sure that it was easily accessible to our residents and the place where they go to look for.
And this would be consistent, right, with the action that we took earlier in the year that moved legal notices from publication in a newspaper to publication on the website?
It is, so it makes it, there are still some items that we have to publish in the newspaper under statute that we can't charter out of, but this was one we could charter out of.
Thank you. Other questions for Ms. Stromberg or for Ms. Bennett? If not, would someone on the?
Motion to approve?
Thank you, Ms. Larson.
Second?
Thank you, Mr. Sipple. Any additional discussion? All those, oh, this is a calls for a rule call vote, because it is a charter amendment. I'll ask the clerk to call the rule, please.
Councilmember Castor?
Aye.
Councilmember Harrison?
Aye.
Councilmember Sipple?
Aye.
Councilmember Phila?
Aye.
Councilmember Larson?
Aye.
Councilmember Kane?
Aye.
Councilmember Sunkel?
Aye.
Councilmember Gayad?
Aye.
And is this a governing body vote, or is this a city council vote? In other words, do I have a vote?
For a charter ordinance, Mrs. Bennett, can you?
Well, I'll vote yes, and in the event that my vote wasn't appropriate, you can strike it from the record.
Thank you.
The vote is unanimous. The charter amendment is adopted, the charter, the amendment to the charter ordinance is adopted, and publication of the financial reports will be done on the website then, going forward. So staff has requested that we conduct an executive session, and that, with that, what I would propose is that we recess into executive session for 45 minutes, starting at about 9:07. Well, let's do this. Let's make it 9:10, so we have a short break for a bio break, and then we would reconvene in the conference room, executive session, and again, that would be to recess into executive session for 45 minutes to discuss confidential information protected by KSA 75-4319B4 as data relating to financial affairs or trade secrets of corporations, partnerships, trusts, and individual proprietorships, and to consult with the city attorney on matters which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship pursuant to the attorney-client exception at KSA Section 75-4319B2. The open meeting will resume in the council chambers at the conclusion of the executive session. Is there a motion? Thank you, Dr. Castor. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Harrison. All those in favor of adjourning to executive session, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ayes have it, and we are recessed to executive session.
And if I asked her, was it a governing body?
Before I came in here was I got a soda and a cup, and I have no idea what I did with it. Somewhere between there and here, it disappears, so.
Well, you spent quite a bit of time down at Bernal, didn't you?
I did.
Camping out when it's 90?
Good times.
That's where your liquids went.
That's right. That's exactly right. And I go back on Friday.
Oh. Well, you're a good sport.
Yeah, it's for a good cause. I enjoy being around the kids.
It looked like Saul Hollis was talking to the residents for quite some time, so that's.
Hope that's a good thing.
So we can go to our website, www.woodcouncil.org, and we're going to talk to them. We're going to talk to them. Yeah, we're taking this, waiting, waiting for our telephone. I think we've got very talented volunteers. All the chairs are going to be there. You're very welcome. Hey, you'd be surprised. Sell yourself short. Thank you for coming and for speaking.
And chief, if you want to ask, the kids go by on the scooters. I live on 148th Street between Mission and Doll, and I mean, it is a parade. It's kind of funny.
Well, yeah, we kind of have to do that now.
We've got to get the H U C working so we can get rid of the humidity in this room.
It feels muddy in here since we left.
Diane, how was the Overland Art Convention Center financed?
It's cool but humid at the same time.
I've just kind of heard through the grapevine that some of these TIP things just don't work or have failed.
All right, the governing body is hereby reconvened. Patty, what do I need to say about this? Anything?
We'll go back online.
Okay, we've concluded, the governing body has concluded its executive session and has taken no action. And I think that we're therefore ready for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. Sipple. Thank you, Ms. Larson. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor of adjourning, please indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, same sign. The ayes have it and we stand adjourned.